Okay, now George.
Good morning, my name is John Murphy and I'm a managing member of the applicant. And with me, I have Kurt Charlin who is with, I always say, I still say Bergman but it's calling. Jim Messenger who is counsel. And we have a number of people that are on the call with us representing the rest of our development team. By way of.
Yep, some folks from SLAM who are the architectural team and then LaChase who's going to be the.
We also will be using for M E Engineering for the M E P work out of Rochester. So, thank you for having us.
Did you guys bring that junk driver?
Um, previously.
I had sent that, I did not bring one.
It's up to you, I mean.
Yeah, I don't, I did not know you did. We sent them. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's the floor plan. I, I don't know if you have all the plans.
The site plan previously?
Well, what do we have?
Kurt, we have them, we could bring them up and share our screen.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Sometimes it's easier if you present it yourself so you know what you're looking at. Just make sure that.
All right, Ian or Matt, do you want to do that?
Well, they're bringing them up.
Hey, John, can I interrupt? Sorry, I'm really sorry. This is Gabe Comstock with SLAM. I think we've got a few people that are showing in the call but may not have been let in, which is a little weird. Can, can I just bother somebody to ask to make sure that the, the host has let everybody in? We can share those plans quicker that way.
Yeah, everybody, yeah, nobody's in the waiting room.
Okay. Interesting.
I just got on, Gabe. Zian Walsh was SLAM. What is looking to be shared here?
Ian, do you have the, the, the files I sent you? Well, I think I reset them yesterday. Just, we're gonna, the site plan would be handy.
Yep, I can bring that up.
October of twenty-two. We acquired the thirty-two, thirty-three acre campus referred to as Upstate Bone and Joint High Fly Road.
Let, let me just preface this, we're, you have fifteen minutes of what we're scheduled to go ahead.
Um, we acquired that October twenty, twenty-two. There's approximately twenty-three vacant acres that came along with us during the past year. We did a subdivision of that vacant parcel with this planning board. And we're in front of the, uh, the board now seeking site plan approval to construct a three-story, one-hundred-and-eight-thousand-square-foot pathology lab onsite. The building is a non-public, one-user, long-term lease pathology lab which would allow for Upstate Medical to expand and consolidate all under one roof. Right now, they're currently in five locations in three different buildings. And we'll pull that up, Ian Walsh, our architect, we'll pull the site plan up for this.
Jeff Johnson, we should be able to see that now. You let me know if you need, want to go into any other plans or, uh, where we need to head from here.
Hold on a sec.
We can see it now.
So, let's really quickly, Kurt, I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit about the site plan.
Yeah, sure. So, the, you know, the main drive coming in the Bone and Joint Center is located down in the, in the lower right-hand corner.
To the site.
The, the site. Right, I was, yeah, I was gonna say, so this is the existing Bone, Bone and Joint Center. So, this is the main entrance off from, uh, Fly Road, sixty-six-twenty Fly Road. Um, so there's our access to the project site, which is, as John mentioned, a little over twenty-three acres, uh, is going to be off in that existing drive. Um, there's going to be two entrances into the overall site, uh, the first being the primary entrance for employees. Um, and, and, uh, you know, the, they have deliveries, things like that. Uh, there really aren't any visitors that are planned for this occasionally maybe, but, um, and we have a few spaces planned for that. The second entrance is primarily for the, the truck entrance. Um, so it accesses the truck docks which are located on the back of the building. The site topography as it goes is higher towards the main entrance off from Fly Road, so the topography drops off. So, as you kind of come down the, the site, the far corner is, is where we have planned, uh, you know, stormwater for the, uh, project. I know when we initially met with, uh, the town kind of preliminarily, we had talked that there were some wetlands that had been delineated on site, walked with the Army Corps. We have since received a favorable, um, decision on that. They've been, uh, non-jurisdictional. So, all those wetlands are, are, there are no wetlands anymore. So, those have been eliminated from the site, which really helped us. We, we actually went back and redesigned the site so that we could put the stormwater in kind of those lower areas. Um, so as you can see here, we have the primary stormwater here. We have to buy our attention along the front. The main front end of the building will essentially just be, uh, what you'll see in the, in the elevations with the parking located in the back. For this particular site, we're showing two-hundred-and-fifty-five parking spaces. Um, code requires seven-hundred-and. Seven-hundred-and-twenty-one spaces. Um, what we've done, and we talked about this at our initial meeting as well, we've shown, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-two, two-hundred-and-fifty total future spaces. There's a few spaces on this side as well. But two-hundred-and-fifty future spaces, uh, to be parked on the site to kind of show that we were, um, you know, able to park, uh, five-hundred-and, five-hundred-and-five, uh, spaces on the site for the, the site. Because this particular site doesn't have any visitors or anything. It doesn't need seven-hundred-and-twenty-one. We provided some information in our cover letter that shows, uh, the shift working.
Yeah, I think the, the concern that we have is pathology moves out, somebody else moves in. I know it's a long-term lease, I know, but things change, right? And this building becomes an office building.
Which is the reason for the parking.
But if, if the size of the building at a hundred-and-eight-thousand square feet requires seven-hundred, would you say seven-hundred-and-twenty-one? And between the two parting fields, you're able to get five-hundred, you're still two-hundred-and-twenty-one short, right? So, we'd need. Yeah, or a big variance in that instance. So. Yeah, that's, that's the thing that we need to address. It's this building realistically could become in the future accomplishment. So, we need to think about. And if you don't need the full seven-hundred-and-twenty-one now, we can start working. We just have to figure out what the best approach is.
Yeah, I think initially we, that's, that's one of the conversations we had. We were going to pursue the variance for the reduction in space, seven-twenty-one to the five-hundred-and-five that we do park. And then we were going to show that in the future, we could park those, you know, spaces that, that could fill the gap between the two-fifty-five that we have in the extra. For the park. Be active with this. I think the only variance we have on this project right now.
Building will have a backup generator. Um, we are incorporating electronic vehicles, state, uh, charging stations. And this building also have a drone landing pad.
I heard charging stations. What was the second thing you said?
Yeah, so there's a drone landing pad, which we've identified on, on the site plan. Uh, it's up near the parking lot. I think there's also going to be a drone landing pad of the.
There is not.
There's not anymore. The, the charging stations, EV charging stations are, are shown with the. If twenty-five.
That's pretty wild. So, pathology lab and the drones. That's going to need to, so, a backstory eventually.
They've already been. It's beyond my, it's not my.
I mean, this, uh, I mean, this site's pretty close to the, the flight path for, uh, for the airport. So, I mean.
What we're just talking about. Yeah, they, they've been looking into all that.
Yeah, the tenant has a very, um.
So, I'm just gonna, like, it, it's really hard for the people on the screen to hear when the fan gets on. That's the mic up there.
Oh.
So, when everybody. It's definitely only hearing one or two voices.
Doug, the Upstate Medical University has a growing, is a significant and growing drone, uh, segment and throughout all of central New York. Um, so they've, they have been working constantly with the airports and the FAA to address this. And when they went and selected our site, they had sufficient approvals that they wouldn't be able to bring drones into the site, uh, in relationship to where the airport is. So, it's, it's already been thought of and, and, uh, discussed with the appropriate people.
Thank you.
Questions?
No progression on building? Architecture?
Yeah, absolutely. Ian, if you'd like to bring up, um, wh- while I have one other thing I talk about, bring up the elevations and you guys could kind of talk about those. That would be great.
You're gonna have to unfortunately talk fast. We have probably about four minutes left.
That's all right. I got a quick, one thing that we do need to flush out early because the site is within a mile of a bat roosting site. It doesn't, isn't identified as one, is we need to get clearing done for this site within that November to March thirty-first window. So, we were trying to understand what the town's process was for just site clearing of major trees which bad, uh, bad sort of word. We need to go through, through. Site plan approvals prior to that. Is there a way to flush out the site clearing without land disturbance that we can complete that process because we're obviously working in the short.
You need to, you need to apply for a grading and fill permit. And then we would need to know what the, what the site plan was going to look like. So.
Which we have. We can identify limited disturbance and stuff like that, but obviously we wouldn't impact the soils because we don't want to start erosion control and all our flip and all that. It would just go unmerely clear the, the substantial trees that would be, instead of potential battery.
But we would, we would need it.
Yeah.
We would need a grading and fill permit.
Okay.
Right? Because it's, the size of the tree. Well, the size of the trees in the town of Duell.
Right.
Or the card, trigger path, right? So, anything over, what is it, like, three or four inches?
Right.
Triggers the grading and fill permit is my answer.
It's, it's something that can be issued prior to site point approvals. It was limited to just the.
If there's no grading, no change move. I'd have to look at the code.
Okay, okay.
I'd have to look at it. Because it, it's a little bit different. Like I just told Nate.
Sure.
It's, it's all, it's all function of the trees and then what you're, you're clearing it for.
Okay.
Right? Because what they, what the town doesn't want to have is they don't want a site cleared and then you don't do anything.
Right, right.
Uh, related to that, we've done phase one and phase two, um, of the site for no, no problems whatsoever. We've already been some minor clearing and that other, other direction of the pool of town for us to do, uh, soil borings. We have no soil condition.
We've completed traffic study. We also don't require any vacation by road for that. Ian, would you like to give a quick run-through? I know we only got a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I'll do that here. This is Gabe Comstock, the design lead. Yeah, thanks Kurt. So, real quickly here, I, I'm not sure what everybody's seen in the past, but what you're seeing now, uh, essentially the massing still stayed the same. Um, we're starting to populate this through a model that, the Revit model, which is a little more construction and detailed for design development. Um, but we've still got a, a largely metal paneled skin. It's got a variegated pattern is what we're imagining to it, a very light shift in each pattern, uh, panel. Maybe not even as much as the model shows here, just a light gradation change. The lower story is a CMU, a fluted CMU, um, just for efficiency and to give it a little plant to sit on. Um, there's some nice features going on. There's a rough, uh, I guess with glass, uh, it's been strategically placed to get light into the labs and to not make this a big high-tech, modern, you know, big glass, overly modern glass block. So, the massing still stayed the same. There's a few things that have changed. We've got an elevator overrun in this top elevation, which is the west side. That's right next to the main entrance of the building, which is really a public, I'm not, sorry, not a public, but a staff entrance since it's non-public. Um, so you see the massing of the elevators, uh, overrun going up to the roof. Um, we're showing some equipment on the roof at the moment and, um, I guess that's about it. We can swing around and look at the other elevations just for the sake of time. It's static. We don't have a model open, so it's a little hard to.
I do have the model, Gabe, if we want to just flip over to it. So.
Yeah, I think we're out of time.
Yeah, we're, we're running short on time here. I think it's.
So, this is the side that faces the parking lot. This is the side that faces, uh, north and then the side that faces, he's coming around, this is the side that faces the, the Fly Road entrance route. As he comes around.
Yeah, I mean, I, on first glance, I appreciate it. I will say, I, I do appreciate you, you showing the mechanical on the roof. You know, it's always good for, it's going to need to be screened. So, you've got some consideration. We're not going to want to see that up there. So, it should tie into the rest of the.
Okay.
What's your schedule so we can give an appreciation to move things forward?
We, we would love to be, I, with all due respect, we'd love to be the brown people. Get the, get the trees done doing now in the next thirty days and then possibly, you know, capable. Uh, and whether or not we consider just seeking a, a grading permit to get started while we're in the process, but as, as soon as possible. There, what, what you don't see here is we spent nine months with the tenant, um, designing all the interiors to the three D. We're now at the point where we're putting case goods, the case part into the property, uh, into the various floors. There's been a very, very in-depth and elaborate design process with, with the tenant.
We take him in, John.
We have a little review kind of where we are, what needs to get done and the tracks system later on, see what we can do for that one. Yeah, well, I don't know what we can promise as of yet until I have an opportunity to change it, Doug. But we'll, we'll see what we can do to, to help push this through. Just make sure that you're meeting all of the deliverable deadlines and responding to comments and stuff that we have. From that, so.
Excuse me, um, just a, a question on the parking because some of it I just could not hear. It was a little, a little mumbly, um, before we got the mic going. What is your desire with respect to the parking?
So, our desire would be to build two-hundred-and-fifty-five, uh, spaces on the site, um, and, and that's based on the requirements from the tenant, specific requirements on their staff and their shifts. Um, and then we would, we currently show an additional two-hundred-and-fifty future spaces. So, our desire would be to, to have a variance issued to reduce the parking requirement from seven-hundred-and-twenty-one to five-hundred-and, I think, five, uh, spaces that we show on the site, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty of those of which would be parked as, uh, you know, just shown as paper parked for future, not necessarily built out unless necessary. Uh, for this development or potentially down the road.
So, we, we just need to discuss that, um, further and we can, the, the board can put twenty-five percent in reserve, no need for a, a parking variance. It's soon. That's going to be passed by the, by the town board within the next month. So, that would be a, an ability we would have, um, if you wanted to go that route and, and build more. Otherwise, we would, um, recommend on a variance and we'll have to see how the board feels about that. I'm not sure we've really talked about it. The, the other, the other thing that's in our code is that you can have fifty percent of parking off-site. Right now, it's all one lot. If that other one was made a separate lot, you know, that, that could be a possibility.
Is there any sort of outbuildings for drone storage?
Don't, not at this time. So.
I would say. I would say at this point, start that process, give Doug the opportunity to do a review and figure out what needs to happen. With that, but at least you're, you're starting that application process. And then we'll be, we'll be this, like Jamie said, that parking for the town or, um, give us a little more control, something. Uh, but that's not until later this month. Yes, yes. Yeah, you're, you'll do, and then again, you'll have, you know, ten minutes to do kind of an update on this one. We'll see if we can get some answers. Before then, we'll probably not. But this will be an opportunity to kind of make a presentation. Yeah, so, uh, you guys need to subscribe for.
Bring, yeah, bring materials.
We sent on electronic files.
Yes, that's all separate for our, for the planning and zoning department. They need it for their record then, um, but usually we bring in your own material and then such to present to them.
What we bring in is the need to clarify you would get rid of that.
Jamie? Jamie?
Yep.
I'm Jim Messenger.
Hey, Jim.
We're going to make requests that the lead agency on the application include county IDA. At their request.
Okay. Did we already declare this a, a type one? I'm not sure.
I would think it is.
I, it, right. I, so. Okay, let me look into that.
Okay. Kevin McCullough is doing the IDA application. For the applicant here. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, guys. Okay. Do we have? Herb Zee on the line? Is there a representative from Herb Zee?
Um, I am, uh, here with Herb Zee. Um, I suppose I can, uh, speak for them. I was expecting them to be in here as well. All right, uh, anyway, uh, I'm Pat Reynolds with I N U Z in Romans Land Surveying. Um, I produced the site plan mapping for this project. So. So, I, uh, I did not attend the original meeting, um. But I know this has been in front of the board. We had comments on this. Uh, we went through, addressed some of the comments, worked with the, uh, applicant to hopefully come up with, uh, a good mash between, uh, what their vision is and what works with the town code. As such, uh.
I just. What we're, what we're hoping to look for is get a, a full project update. Um, I think we've asked some questions about the use. My understanding is kind of what we, we have not made a recommendation yet for change of use. To this one, right?
Nope.
So, we need to make a recommendation on change of use for the property, but we need to understand kind of what's going on. We've got, we've had some discussions from the last time that you were in front of us as to kind of what some of the expectations for the board were. And want to see if those have been addressed. Um, and then understand what some of the internal function is.
Okay. So, I guess if you could go over kind of what, what your expectations were and then I can, uh, I can kind of piggyback off of that and see.
Can you bring the site plan up? You have the site plan able to be shared?
Good morning, Pat. Do you need me to share it?
Uh, if you've got it handy, um.
So, I, you know, I think one thing is that the drawings you sent over indicate that there's a lounge involved with this and that lounges are not involved at, uh, this location. So, that's one thing. The other thing I think that the board wanted to take a look at is this is an existing bank with a previously existing, uh, gas station. So, I think the board wanted to take a look at some of the architecturals and then maybe take a look at, you know, the, the drive-through and, you know, is that allowed? And, you know, how's that going to work? And we, we are next to a residential area, you know, what type of screening would be done? Those type of things is, is what. Plantings. I think the last comment or one of the comments that was made at the last meeting was, there's the, that, the old service garage onsite, which nothing was going to be done to that one because, you know, they're not occupying it. Right.
Okay, um, are you able to?
Yeah.
Not yet. There it is.
Can you see this?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Um, I will say in respect to the lounge, um, it would be just a sit-down area, um, and we were actually thinking of, um, changing that out and just adding some more showcases there. Um, and adding just some more, uh, like cameras and things like that rather than having like such a large sit-down area. It, it would not be like a lounge in the terms of like consumption or anything like that. Um, it was just like a little sit-down spot for, um, people. Kind of like a little waiting room almost. So, would the drawing be relabeled as a waiting room? So, there would be no confusion in the future of what your explanation of a lounge is and what someone else's definition of a lounge is? Okay, definitely. Um, I'll have that label changed. Um, or there, did you want to see this drawing or the architectural drawings?
Have you done? Is there?
I mean, I think we want to look at the site plan first, don't we?
Yeah, look at, look at the site plan. There probably is. There's enough, right? There's one move. You're gonna have at least two, right, means be brief. So, with the, with the site plan. You know, it's a, it's a building. Right, still, still. Start with the garage building that's there. Update us on what modifications and updates have been done there. We're going to want to see better planting. I don't think I've seen a, a solid planting plan for that area, for the whole site, frankly.
The, the current, the current plan for that area, um, there, there's some shrubbery in, if you're looking at the building to the, to the left side front in that corner there. The idea, the idea here was to, we've, we've had a landscaper look at it, um, which we're, we'll, we can talk about some of the other pieces in terms of screening and the drive-through that's in the site plan that we put in here. But essentially, at the end of the day, um, I mean, this area, what we've proposed is, is a cleanup effort, right? There's, there's some overgrown, um, six-foot shrubbery, um, in the one, in the one corner of the garage. The, the proposal is for us to clean this area up. Seed it, mow it, maintain it, just aesthetically clean it up from, from the way it sits today.
Do you have the existing site plan available?
Um, we haven't added that shrubbery.
Yeah, the shrubbery's not in here because it, it was, um, I don't know. Pat, Pat, do you have original site plans that show some of the native overgrown? site plans that show some of the native overgrown stuff that has developed over the years? Um, because it.
I I've got a, I've got a picture I took when I was out onsite that shows some of it. And then as far as um think if you flip to the existing page.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've we've walked this site with a with a local lan- with a landscaping company that we're working with. And and essentially, I mean, at the end of the day, the the i- the idea with the garage, um, we're not, the only thing that we possibly use the garage for is storing vehicles and whatnot. Um, and and at the end of the day, I mean, we're just looking to, you know, clean up the area a little bit. Um, and, you know, make it presentable from the way it sits today.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna look at, I mean, this is a a full site plan application. So there's a, you know, there's a series of you know, checklist items that need to be addressed. Uh, you know, there are modifications to the building. So there are, there's landscaping that's gonna happen around them. Um, building maintenance.
Which I think we addressed in in the the last page, um, all the landscaping that we're, you know, proposing.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you you got, you're trimming some shrubs, you're, you got some mulched and small planting area around the building that you're using. The concern being the building on the corner, which is the prominent building, not necessarily the building with full use, but that brick building. Not a whole lot's being done to that. In fact, you've actually cleared out the bushy area and left it open. I think there there is a tree that's in that little triangle space to the right, that's right.
Yeah, there there is a tree, just just the coloring with the shading that washed it out.
You know, and then, you know, there are street tree requirements. There's a whole checklist of items that the the town has. So I think, you know, that building. Someone say something?
Yeah, sorry, this is Doug. I I also just wanted to to um to make mention of some sentiments, the last, the last concept review regarding screening and really kind of isolating this site in use from the the residential neighborhood that's two page bottom. That's also a, I think, a pretty important part of of uh improving and developing the site is some some real significant screening.
Yeah, I was getting there.
Oh, sorry.
No, that that's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you. You know, so there, I think there's a, there's a lot more that needs to be done to this site.
Is this drive through feature intended to be used as a drive through?
Yes.
Um. So is is that there's two bays? Like, it doesn't have one of those like suction shooting systems?
Um, it does. Um, we would be only using the manual drive through um section of it.
I so I mean, I guess the question is then should those other structures come down? I throw that to the board. Um.
Well, you do that and you you address the whole roof on that side of it. It's also a a good escape lane, you know, just in terms of bypass of cars. I don't know.
Is it an, is it an island? I I can't see um without it being blown up. Is it just a single?
There there's a roof overhang that covers. Um. That.
Oh, I can pull up the architectural drawing.
Yeah, there you go. That's the.
Yeah, there's access to this.
And then there's two lanes of of how to get your your business. So.
Yep, so it is set up to use the um, the pipe system, um, but initially, we would just be using the manual side. Uh, we would be looking towards using the pipe system um later on in the future, um, just to make sure that it's fully functional and it'll work the way that we intended to.
Is there, um, I, and again, these are just questions, and I'm asking the board, I don't have an opinion um about the curb cuts, the number of curb cuts on the site.
Yeah, I was, I was also thinking about that too, Jamie. There's what, six, five?
You know, and the and the site circulation.
Was there a que- I'm sorry, I was talking to Doug.
Yeah, yeah, I I said, I I don't know, there's a, it there, a topic for discussion for the board is is curb cuts. The number that there are in site circulation, has that all been looked at and reviewed?
That and the stacking to get back to that road, I think, uh, would also be maybe an issue if you funneled it down to one, how how many cars could fit between there and how.
Right, right, we have, I, there there are revised stacking um requirements.
I mean, if you fun- if you funneled it. If you funneled it to one, I don't think you'd get five, four cars in there, maybe. If you funnel it to two, or you expanded to, obviously, but I don't know. You know, that's.
Yeah, I mean. Did you already send them one letter? So. And there was a response in there? Yeah, but, okay. It doesn't mean anything to you. My opinion. Right, so I think from what we have in front of us, there is still work to be done in terms of landscaping, site access. You know, I appreciate the comments on curb cuts. I don't know without real a lot of site modification, that reducing the number of curb cuts is helpful. Right, you'd have to.
It just may limit the flow, especially if there's doing a drive. We have to see the path of travel.
Yes, can so.
The the so, the site, the site itself in terms of parking lot is quite, is quite large and if, I mean, it it flows quite nice. I mean, there's that, there's that one island up here with with two, with two entries that flow into the front, front of the of the um site. There's, you know, the a flow through the drive through, and then there's even, there's even another exit out on to, um.
Midler.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what we're looking at right now is the fact you've got one, two, three, four curb cuts for this property, frankly. You know, you've got a drive through, you know, I mean. You know, I don't know that there's a whole lot we can do in terms of the curb cuts. I think there's.
Like, you're, are you proposing?
We issued you guys a a comment letter previously, which I think we got some responses to when I was just looking at some of it here, which is, you know, we'll, we'll do this, we'll do this, you know, responding to the letter. Um. I don't know that what's been put on here responds to all those comments in terms of, you know, additional plantings, um. You know, the landscaping, the building maintenance, or, you know, upgrade, I think we we looked at the bank building, but I don't, and I I know there are elevations in the in the drawings out of the the garage building. But it's unclear as to kind of what work is being done on that drive through garage building.
The drive through garage, the drive through.
Not the drive through the garage, not the drive through garage, just the garage. I mean, when I say drive through, it's because it had overhead doors on the north side and the south side, but the overhead doors on the south side open up to lawn, and they don't actually open up to.
Yeah, like if you see, there's I I zoom it. Oh, did it, did it quit on me here? Um.
No.
There, there's three, you know, there there is three garage doors. The one has an entry. I mean, the proposal again was to clean it up. I guess what I'm I'm curious of, we and we and we talked with the um, the landscaper is in this corner, is in this corner here. You know, that where where that, um, I don't know, uh, shrubbery gone wild kind of happened, um, you know, if there's a need to, um, to dress that corner up, um, but a but again, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I. So if you go back into the design guidelines, they'll tell you that on all these buildings, they require foundation plantings that are native to the area. Uh, none of those are depicted on the drawings. There's no landscape. You know, uh, this site buffering, you know, I think likely would want to see some sort of a fence that separates you from the rest of the residential neighborhood, cleaning up the site. Um. I mean, you know, the question for the board is, you you know, there's three lanes for drive through. If you're only gonna use one, should, like Jamie said, should two of the lanes go away, or, you know, should there be an added feature in there? Should there be landscaping or, you know, something else other than just, you know, keeping? Yeah, I mean, I think there's.
Keeping something there just because it's there, right? Because we're we're basically into a whole new site plan. But I also want to look at the stacking requirements. I have to um see what our code says. So I think there might be an issue with that.
Uh, so so if I can ask, as far as the screening along the drive through, um, one thing I was kind of thinking was go, was maybe this more natural with the plantings, more of a filtered? Um, just because there there's a fair amount of lawn between the drive through lane and the street. Um, but there's some spots as far as the actual uh property line to the drive through lane. Um, we only have like three feet, uh, which would have been down at the bottom. Um, where the drive through kind of runs into the parking lot. We got those three uh red viburnum bushes proposed there. We've only got about three feet there, and I was kind of worried if we have a fence right up on the um blacktop, if we're gonna be running into issues. Uh. I mean, especially during like snow removal, uh, keeping that fence in good condition. So I I guess I'd like to see, you know, is it kind of the board is leaning towards uh a fence type of screening?
If I, if I, if I put a preference out there, I'd like to put a preference out for the rest of the board to react to. Because we run into this issue before, but I would, I would recommend a fence along that west and south property line. Take the plantings that you proposed in that southwest corner and move them out towards the street. And use those plantings out there, get the street trees in for our guidelines. But having the fence down along that south and west property in that corner there, I think is more beneficial than a couple of bushes down in that corner. So take the plantings that you have and and use them elsewhere onsite to to meet the design guidelines, but put the fence down there and don't have any foundation plantings down around the base of the fence. Put the fence, we'll have what, six inches on the property line? So put the, put the fence six inches, and I can't, I can't see where your property line is at the bottom of this drawing, so I would assume it's just off the parking in there, but put it six inches off the property line. You know.
I'm not sure there's six inches there is uh uh is is one of the issues with the the way this this Palmer Street runs parallel to the property, um. Which is kind of why, at the end of the day, I mean, we proposed building this screen um for the little bit the of of I guess residential that that sits on the other side of Palmer Street. Um, to to shield that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think what's, I don't think what's shown there is a substantial screen.
Yeah, it needs to address visual and as much sound headlights. You know, that that's the intent. We're we're just very sensitive to uh commercial uses adjacent to residential uses. So it's really important, it's effective. I agree. I don't think, I don't think some low plantings would be effective.
So as far as the screening, uh, if if we were to propose a fence along there, the goal, would it be more uh to kind of shield the drive through, or is it something you'd want more of that solid screening running all the way out to uh Midler?
I would say a solid screen.
I agree.
All the way uh long to Midler?
Uh, all the way across.
That's what I'm saying, along that west and that south property line.
Yeah.
Okay. Because there are some existing trees, uh.
Yeah, they're kind of, they've been washed out right there, but there's some locuses. Um. Yeah. That are pretty large, actually, um.
It's not security, we can just put them there.
I mean, I mean, is it, is it way out of the realm? I mean, because as cars come around, um, they're obviously, you know, they they come out of the driveway and they straighten out by before they hit this. Um, this eighteen inch locus here, I mean, is the proposal would be a fence all all the way to this to this street is a proposed to just blocking this um, this exit way, um. I mean. Is that, I mean, is that, is that, is that what the board's recommending?
That's what it sounds like our board is recommending.
I mean, that that's that, I mean, that's pretty substantial, I'll be honest, um. I mean, we're, we're, we're look, we're looking to come in to the building. It's been vacant for a couple of years. We're looking to clean up the place quite a bit. We've worked with some landscapers. But, I mean, in terms of our business plan, in those kind of modifications, um. I mean, that's, that's gonna be an issue, um.
Also, remember, this is subject to a um, a specific use permit.
Well, totally, hundred percent that that we're aware of. We've, we've gone down um that application path already, um.
And and it needs a recommendation from this board to 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 be entertained. Have you gotten any word on that? Has the application been um put in and accepted at this point?
No, um, all the items were dropped off. Um, they're waiting on final approval from um, the planning board before we can be scheduled for a special use permit.
So, um, this board has to recommend on on the special use permit. So when when was the application for the special use permit submitted?
Um, the applicant, application items are dropped off um yesterday, I believe.
For the.
Are you, are you, just for clarity, you're you're talking, the materials were dropped off for the Z B A yesterday, not the planning board, but the Z B A?
There's the Z B A. Um, we just, just in case of anything, we just wanted to have a copy and everything there, just like um, just there. And if we needed to change anything along the way, we would go and drop off like an updated version. Um just there, and if we needed to change anything along the way, we would go and drop off like an updated version.
So the application for for specific use permit to ZBA was dropped off yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to get get a, just get a flavor of our of the timelines and so forth, so. Um this board has to recommend to the ZBA on the specific use permit or it won't. It's a requirement in our code, so I I think some of these things are also applicable. To the specific use permit and the use. Um that's proposed under, under the uh, the uh regulations. Of a one ninety-two dash six nine point one. So I know that um. This board has recommended on two other um cannabis. Um retail shops in. Into wit so far, um. I'm not sure that the the one on Bridge Street, I don't know if it's gotten a specific use permit yet, Doug, do you know? But I I I know there was a positive recommendation on that, there was a positive recommendation on. Right, the there was the positive recommendation and and an approval on the one on Kenny's um. Street and just, you know, just kind of to put it in perspective, the type of structures and what has been required. For these uses on the specific permit level and the planning board level have been um. You know, have have been appropriate to the specific use that that's being proposed, so I I think that this is. This is a large site, it's a, it's a tired site, it's an unused site, but it still has to go through the same. Um review process, and I know that one of the things that the sport is concerned with is. Um the proximity to the residential and that and that um. Is something that is important to the um the criterion of the specific use permit. So it it while it's it's technically an allowable location, it still has to go through those issues, so. I think that's why you're getting the kind of review comments um that you are. And just in general, and it doesn't really have much to do with the specific use that. All of these sites that come in in the town that have been tired and neglected, um. There is never an instance where it's, it's not put through full site plan review and I've been working with this board for. Over twenty years. So. That that's my two cents, if you if you don't know who I am, I'm the attorney, so.
No, that's understandable, um I definitely take all the comments into consideration and follow up with our. Um site plan, sat, sorry, site plan, um person Pat and. Um just kind of get some of those ideas onto, onto the site plan.
Yeah, I mean, I would, my, I think there's still site work to be done. On this one, so just take our comments, give them consideration, review our design guidelines. Understand what we'll be looking, you know, at as we continue to move forward.
Of course, thank you.
And then the other thing, can I ask that you? Is I think we have the, this the the site plan materials that we have here. We do have building elevations, but can you add some more annotations to the existing or to the? Building elevations, both for the bank building and the. The garage in terms of. Materials, what you're replacing, what you're painting, what your window, whatever. There's just, there's very limited information, it's hard for us to understand what what you're proposing.
Okay. Alright, perfect.
And then I would recommend you do a full code analysis on the bank building in your proposed use. I'm not sure that you're able to have what you want in the basement, but you'll have to do a code analysis on that one to figure it out.
But what's, what is that question, Nate?
The egress out of the basement.
Yeah, there's.
It's a lot like it meets current code.
Um the egress in the basement, like those stairs going upstairs?
Well, your occupant load, I think, would be too high for a single means of egress.
Okay.
Even though the basement isn't general use, like, I mean. It's like, it's like a bathroom for um staff and lunchroom, I mean, it's not. It's not like. Um.
I would just, I think you need to have an architect look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's habitable, then you got to have some way of getting out of the basement.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a single means down there, but in terms of the use, the occupancy. Uh you just, you need to have somebody look at it and and make sure that it's compliant. If it is, then great. My recommendation is just have somebody look at it.
Alright.
What's everybody's thoughts if we got rid of the entrance on Midler? You know, Doug was, had some comment, I don't know if he's still on, but. Entrances.
Yeah, well, my, my comment really is really about circulation around the site. I mean, it looks like it's a right-in, right-out on Court Street, uh I think that's a little bit. Uh confusing for site circulations, combination of perpendicular and diagonal parking. Um I think this site, again, as Jamie echoed, is it's a very tired site, it's been copped together over the years, this is what. This is what it is today, I don't think that this is. I don't think this is a great layout in general, if we were starting over, we would never do it this way, so we got to find a balance between trying to correct. Some of these strange circulation patterns and this parking layout, still make it work. I I think there's a balance.
What what is the parking count for this use?
That's the question.
I believe there were um eighty parking spots.
Eighty for, it's in the, it's in, it's on, it's in there.
Um eighty existing includes two accessible.
No, the question is, how many are required?
Fifteen required is what I came up with. Uh if I'm not mistaken, it was one per hundred and fifty square feet.
On retail. Well, that that's a, that's a question for the board, should some of this parking be removed?
That's what I was thinking. And then there would give a more green area along that side, if I were the uh, was it, there's a trailer park there, right, or?
It would help the intended flow too, like it would let you read the where you're supposed to be going.
I I don't know what was going on in that garage building before, but that is a, I don't get. There, a bank never required that much parking. Ever, even in its, in even in its heyday, um. Just that that strange angular parking, I don't know what what direction, um I know that we have felt that that. Um the the cannabis retail may require more. Um. More parking than than a usual, that's that's one thing, I am concerned about that stacking into Court Street Road. I don't, I wonder if the applicant has anything they can cite about um. The amount of traffic that would be expected in a drive-through, but I think it's going to be significant, and I don't think there's anywhere near enough stacking there. I mean, I'm just, you know, look at, look at the Starbucks or, you know, um. The 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 amount of stacking that we required over on the Erie Boulevard. Starbucks and the recent is much greater than what were is there, and I think we need to see it, it's not shown.
Per perhaps, uh this is something maybe I'm not too clear on and I probably should have cleared with um them first, but. As far as the drive-through goes, is it something they can pull up and they can order on the spot? Or is it they order ahead and then they would come in and uh like pick up pre-order type of thing?
Um so essentially, we would um be offering both options where you can go, if you can go up to the drive-through and order there. Um or you can do like your pickups for any orders that you placed online.
Okay, I just, just wanted to be clear, I I ha- I have some ideas and I just wanted to.
I guess I, we'd like, we'd like to see if there is a a sample of any of this being done anywhere. I know it's new in New York, you might have to go outside of New York to give an example, but.
That's definitely something that we can do.
I I would, I mean, amongst the many concerns, that would be one of my biggest concerns is that that is going to become primarily. Where can you go for your drive-through cannabis and that's where it's going to be and it's just going to be jammed and that this, it can't be accommodated. Out from a stacking um situation. And then the question is, a- again, I put this to the board, because we're really trying to understand this for the first time. Um do you allow the stacking to occur in the front yard? Rather than the green and put the greens someplace else, because you are going to have a stacking problem on Court Street Road, I believe.
So I think there's, there's two parts that need to happen to this, just because I want to be respectful of people's time right now. I think from the applicant side, you've heard our comments, you need to look at some of these issues to try and work through them. Doug in his office is going to review this package that's here in conjunction with our design guidelines. And zoning, that will provide any final comments. For this one, but I I do believe there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on this one. Uh before we kind of get comfortable with. A site plan approval.
I'm thinking that when they go back and look at these comments and and we get something back in, there may need to be another work session before it comes back to the board.
And I think that's fine. Is that there?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh from our board, is there any other? Comment, issues, anything else you want to talk about? Otherwise, we'll see you guys Thursday night.
Thank you.
See you Thursday.
See you Thursday.
Thursday.
Thank you.